Thank you.
To open the public meeting portion of planning board.
It's the 26th, October 26th, my birthday.
And first order of business, Mr. Mashand, I'd like to put in his voting number for Mr. White, so he's not, but Barbara's gonna be showing up there, or she is there?
She is there.
Okay. And we do have a forum present. So with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Ronald and Teresa Skovron, Skovron, it sounds Swedish.
Bullwinkle.
Oh, okay. Ronald and Teresa Skovron of Newton, New Hampshire, request a public hearing for a conditional use permit on based business art gallery at 21 Gould Hill Road, Newton, New Hampshire. Property is referenced as tax no. Block five, block five. And first thing, I'd like to have Jen, Representative for the Planning Commission, address any comments and quickly as a completeness of the application.
So I just have a couple of comments, and I think you have an email from me that's part of your packet, and then also the applicant's response about a couple of questions to clarify their original application about parking, what their intent was. So I don't actually have any further comments because they answered all of my questions, and I just think that the application is complete. It does seem to qualify as a home-based business, not just home occupation.
Okay. All right, so with that, if there are any comments on the completeness of the application, if none, could I have a motion to take first?
I'll make a motion to take first.
Second?
Okay.
We have a motion in second.
Who was the second?
That was Bob.
And who called the board?
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
And Mr. Mashan.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Point of order, are you needing to talk about the people, have them introduce themselves and where they are, and if they're alone, who are attending remotely?
You actually don't. We did that, but, oh.
I believe you have to.
The two people that are remote are Mr. Moran and Ms. White.
Okay, do they have to say that they're alone?
That they're present, and if anyone's with them.
Remember when we were...
That's something, I can...
That was when we were completely virtual.
That is when you do an entire meeting.
Well, it's also what you've always done with school board meetings, for instance, when there's a remote attendee and so forth. I just want to make sure that we're official, that's all.
Mr. Moran, are you alone?
I have a very small human on my lap, but that's...
He just had a baby.
Ms. White?
No, I'm not alone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so would the applicant like to briefly describe what they are going for on their application? Just for, and I do have to have you, I know it's a big crowded room, but have to have you approach the mic, please state your name, even though we go for the recording, and then...
Good evening. My name is Ron Skovron, and this is my wife Teresa.
Hi.
And we're applying for a home business permit. I think it best if I just go by the application to kind of run down the things here.
That's fine.
The name of the business would be Teresa Skovronat, and the nature of the business would be the studio art gallery, where a lot of her work is just done there, and a small percentage is the gallery. We're looking for hours of operation. On the form, we had placed, opened for seven months, with stipulating from April to June and September to December. Since applying for this, we thought it would be better off just doing an overall thing, although those are the months we are intending to be open, is that we say that one week in the month, we will be open. Now, the hours of operation, we initially put 12 to 5, and that's restricting us again, so we decided to go apply for 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Along with, before I go on, the park, the weekends every month, that would include two extra ones in November, one extra one in November and December. So we're talking possibly 14 openings, which that's not going to happen, but we want to cover all our bases that we're looking at. Again, change the hours from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and always open by appointment. Number of employees, zero. Parking, as described on the plan that I submitted, there's plenty of parking either in the driveway or adjacent to the barn in the field, which is all level and grass. As far as customer expectation, during the hours that we're open, could be anywhere from zero to six to seven throughout the hours of the operation, not at any one given time, but it would be great if they were. But that's our proposed expectations of customers, again, zero to six, zero to seven during the hours of the operation for the weekend. And I think, and I think that that's it. We're here to answer your questions.
Any questions from other board members?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Barbara.
Sorry, okay. I had two questions, but let me ask the first one right now, and then I can come back and ask the second one. I would suggest that the applicants perhaps ask for every weekend, and that way they can have, they can have their openings on the weekends that they want to, because maybe the weather will prevent them from having an opening on one weekend. So I don't think every weekend is too much to ask for, and they can pick and choose which weekends in between that time. But that way, they won't have to come back to the board for a change.
Okay, thank you.
That was exactly what I was going to suggest. Very often, we have applicants come before us who ask for certain things, and if you were to expand or to want to do more, you'd have to come back in order to change it. So we usually recommend that you ask for, you kind of ask for what it could possibly become, so that you don't have to come back and see us, and you can just do what works for you. So we usually recommend that.
Then let me change that to possibly be open every weekend.
Okay.
It won't be necessary.
Throughout the year.
It will be one. You probably won't want it, but that's okay.
It actually saves you, as long as...
You can't paint that fast.
As long as the, as long as we feel like it still falls under the size of what, you
know, the home-based business is and all that, it's better, as both the comments made, to have the outer limits of what you might use, because once you walk away tonight, if it's approved, that's set in stone. And if you want to do more than that, you have to go through the process again. You can always do less, but, so that's...
That sounds good.
That sounds good.
Okay. Well, Ms. White, what was your other question?
Oh, okay, my other question was, on the note that they had with their application, they said, "Starting out, we propose to offer original art and complimentary items." Now, my suggestion there also is, I don't know what they had in mind for what they might possibly want to include later on, but if they have an idea, they may want to include that in the permission now, too, and when they're ready, they can do that, even, but they've already had permission for it. Because I don't know whether they were considering maybe some antique things, because I know that at one point in time, they were in antiques. So they might want to ask for anything else that they may want included at this time, and then they can bring it in later on if we give permission.
Before I go too far on that, Jen, could you, because if we go too far, we're starting to become a retail establishment.
Yeah, I mean, if you think you might, you know, occasionally bring in like guest artists to sell there, I would ask, I would have that be stated tonight, if you think that's even a possibility. I mean, if it's additional, like you want to, you may verge into selling antiques. That's another level. That would be sort of generally outside of the home-based business, kind of depending on scale.
Okay, well, again, my art, it's, my business is Teresa Skovron art, which encompasses many forms of art. It can mean painting on antique bowls, it can be painting on an old sled, it can be painting on anything. It's not just canvas, it's not just what people define fine art as or think of, it's not just a canvas-framed painting. So it encompasses that, it encompasses assemblage, I might put something together as a vignette, sell it as a whole, or as a part, or by the yard. It's art, it's what I do. I don't have much room in there, so I'm limited to how much, but the business, I don't know, I think we missed on the fine art. I think someone had suggested fine art, or we would consider fine art. It's art.
Yeah, I actually, I don't think that the art is a problem. I understand it can come in many different forms, it's just if you were to, I don't know, bring in a big truck full of antiques, and that's what you were selling, that's sort of what I was implying, not necessarily the type of art that you sell is not okay.
Anything that we would sell would have my work on it, or produced as cards that I do now, bookmarks, incidental.
So I have a question, because it was raised, just bear with me, because I'm kind of, like a guest artist coming in, I'm not saying you even think about that, but say they wanted to bring in a guest artist for a weekend, would that, are we talking, does that fall outside of what we're talking about here as a home-based business?
I mean, technically, you can have up to one employee, as long as it is in the, I'm going to say, the spirit and intent of what they are asking for, I don't think that would be a problem. But if, you know, if they were having big art shows every weekend, and having, you know, vendors outside, that clearly would be outside of what they are asking for tonight.
So a guest would be okay?
Well, I do have some plans and ideas for the future. I'm not wanting to give them all out, but that's a possibility, is a guest once in a while here or there.
Okay.
As long as it's within the scope of what is getting...
So is that something that we'd need to have written in, or does it fall under the general home base? See, that's what I'm, I don't want to have anybody complaining that, oh, she had a...
I think it falls under the general intent, because I think that's a fairly reasonable, you know, you may bring in a guest once in a while.
It would be an artist, artisan, something that is hand-done, something that is, they create.
Yep, fully understand. If you wanted to put in as a condition of approval, anything that would maybe be expanded outside of the footprint of the barn, which is where they've indicated you want to have your gallery, then that's fine, but it has to stay within, because that's actually part of your home occupation, home-based business.
Yeah, that becomes another discussion there.
So I think it's actually sort of self-regulating based on the space, to be honest.
Are you planning any signage? Yes. Well, that was a question we were going to ask you, actually, as far as the signage goes. Would we be able to put out, again, one of those signs?
Like a sandwich board or a yard sign?
Right, one of those plexi signs, maybe in a few sections in town, one at the bottom of our hill, on Gould Hill, at that little section, a week prior to each event.
Once it's off your property, that's not really our purview, correct? That would be...
Selectment.
The select board. If you were going to put one down, you know, a block away from your property, that's, that wouldn't be part of this. So we can't say no or yes on that. The placement of a sign like that would be like the select board, the selectmen.
Or the property owner.
Or the property owner, yeah, if it's, I don't know where, like a sandwich board, I don't think we really regulate those.
No, I'm talking... Well, I was thinking in terms of right there at the bottom of our hill, adjacent to our...
Okay, so on your property, oh, not...
By the telephone pole in the middle of the intersection.
Oh, okay.
That would require selectmen.
Yeah.
However, you did approve for the gentleman with the seafood, he is allowed to put in on his own property a sign that he plans on taking out.
Yes.
So if you were, if they went on private property, I mean, if I stick one in front of my house, that's my business.
Right.
The selectmen determine if you can put stuff in like the triangles, there's a, like the ones at 108, just around the corner from you, that would be, the board of selectmen would have to...
So could we avoid that sign?
No.
Jen, go ahead.
I don't want that sign for advertisement.
So you are permitted, with a home-based business, if you get approved tonight, to have a two-square-foot sign on your property with this approval. I understand you're asking for sort of like outside.
I think, right.
So you would need, in some cases, select board approval. You are not allowed to have signs in state road right-of-ways, that's just not permitted in New Hampshire without DOT's approval. You know, if you put it on, just like a political sign gets put on people's private property, that would be okay. So I know there's a lot in that, but, so yes, but also no.
I think that's a gray area, so for this board, all we can tell you is that if this is approved, you could put a small sign like that on your property. Beyond that, we don't give you approval either way. So if it's on, if it's on somebody's private property, you know, I'm not going to say one way or the other. You know, if it's on town property, it's select board, and stay out of the state right-of-ways.
Okay.
That's the only thing, that is the, those biggies, so...
Okay, so is there a limit to the size of the sign that I put out at our openings?
On your property, it's...
It's not a permanent sign on a building.
Correct, yeah.
It would be a sign that would be put out...
Could we put a sandwich board up?
At our driveway.
Yeah. In our property.
Or does it have to...
Is that the two-square feet?
So you are allowed one sign of two-square feet. It does not, your ordinance does not speak to temporary signs.
Yeah.
A lot of towns do have more comprehensive signs, but yours does not permit it, it also does not prohibit it as a sign.
Yeah, so as a sandwich board, and as we've done in the past, like for a seafood operation, if it's temporary, it's allowed by lack of... Default. Yeah, it's kind of allowed by default. You could have a permanent sign up to two-square feet.
Right.
It's pretty small.
I understand that, but I'm thinking more in terms, I would not want to think that we couldn't put a sandwich board sign at the bottom of our driveway on our property on those weekends.
We, as, we don't, we don't have a regulate, some towns regulate those, we currently do not. So by default, I would say you could put a temporary sandwich board sign down there, as long as it's temporary, and we're going to...
Yeah, about the only thing is that if it were, if it were so big, it were a safety issue, then the town could have you take it down, but assuming it's standard sandwich board, that shouldn't be the issue.
No, we would be concerned about safety.
Yeah, now Amesbury Road is a state road. And you're, you're pretty close to the intersection there, so the, I don't know how, because the, because the state, I believe, their right-of-way extends further in on an intersection, it's not just the standard eight feet out.
Yeah, and it depends on the road, to be honest.
Yeah, so I would have it, you know, and basically as a safety issue, have it as far away from the intersection, it could, you know, you have your two entrances to your driveway, I'd put it on the far side, but we don't, we're spending too much time on that, we don't really need to...
Okay.
...talk about that. So just for me then, and then I'll open up to other questions. First floor, entirely inside the barn, what do you foresee, if anything, outside of the barn?
A crowd waiting to get in.
Okay.
Talking about conceivably, conceivably, when we're open, maybe, maybe art hanging on the door, some art...
Maybe, well, it might be outside on the barn, on the barn door.
Okay.
Or it could be on my porch, possibly.
Only while we were open.
And maybe like...
Weather permitting, of course.
I, yeah, so we're limited to how many people we'd like to have in the barn at one time, and if it was some miracle, we had five, it would be probably limited to five people in the barn with myself, so that's six. So if there is any, another one or two people, we would, they would have to wait probably till, so there'd be activity maybe out there, I don't know. We're thinking of an evening, like maybe two Saturdays, one in November and one in December, where we'd close at 2:30, reopen at 5 till 7 for an evening reception, kind of, or something where it gives people who are limited, good time, are working some evening.
Okay, the reason I, we're talking about outside, because the ordinance itself talks about there should not be any outside display of the home-based business, other than the little sign. So we have allowed, of course, a little bit of leeway with that in the past, I'm just trying to get an idea. So right now, I've heard potentially artwork hanging on the door.
I might have one art piece, so that if, let's say there were some other people, or some people who were outside waiting, I might have one or two paintings on the barn door, which is protected somewhat from elements to an extent, and that would be only if...
The sun was out.
But other than that, just the sign.
So how would, what's the best way to...
I mean, if you, if you wanted to allow, so I'm picturing you have barn doors that just open, you know, technically, if they were on the inside of the doors, to be honest, that is inside the display, the doors happen to be open, I'm not trying to get into the weeds of this, but I don't think that that would be an issue. Having it on the porch, you know, if you were to have lots of displays on, I assume you have a farmer's porch, that would probably not be in the spirit of a no-outside display.
Yeah, so the doors would probably, at least for the rest of the year, which we're hoping for, the holiday season, would be shut. So I could have them hanging inside through the window, but that's mine.
Okay, so on a year-round basis, they would be on the...
Nothing outside.
Be fine as long as they hang on the inside of the doors, and the doors are open, and now the inside's facing outside, but that's...
The doors are open, they'll be hanging on the doors, the doors swing in, but they are wide open to the driveway.
They swing in?
They fold in, yes.
They fold in.
Oh, okay.
But they're very visible if you come up to the...
Okay, so they're visible once you get up there and approach it.
Right.
Okay, Jim?
I'm just, I'll add to the conditions saident, that the board allows for the display of artwork on the barn doors while, during the hours of operation.
Is that probably going to cover what you'd possibly be doing for visible from the outside?
Right.
Well, that way, if they choose to close a door, they can still have something displayed on it during the hours of operation, because you wouldn't leave a painting outside 24/7.
And it would be probably two paintings at the most.
That's...
But you don't need to limit yourself with this.
Yeah.
This is just saying on the door, you know, on the doors, so however you did it. It's not an issue.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board, both here and up there?
No, I'm good.
Any comments from the public? If sir, please, Joe, approach the mic, state your name, thank you.
Hello, planning board, good evening. First, happy birthday, Annie.
Well, thank you.
Barb, Mr. Moran, nice to see you on video.
Hi.
Good evening, planning board, my name is Edwin Cronolik, resident 14 Gould Hill Road, kind of across the street from Teresa and Ron. I just wanted to speak in front of you today to show my support for the art gallery at 21 Gould Hill Road. Teresa's a very talented artist, and I feel this is a great addition to the town and a new business that could kind of make Newton well-known, something that Newton doesn't really have, and it's really cool to see. Teresa and Ron are great neighbors, and I know they will follow every rule and stipulation the planning board sets forth, and I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Edwin. Okay, I do have to, I think that's all the questions I have. I have, I have to bring this up because it was a, it's, you guys don't need to worry about this. I received, or the board received, a reply from the fire chief, all the department heads are notified when there's a new application put up. So I'm just going to read this in the record, don't worry about it when you hear this. Doggett, who's the administrative assistant, "At this time, this department does not approve this petitioner's request until a full and complete life safety review can be done by this department and the town's code complaints officer prior to its approval. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me, thank you, fire chief." So it really doesn't apply because he, at his, at that stage, he is not part of any kind of approval process, so, but that was just, because we received that, I have to take note of it. Go ahead.
In talking to the building inspector to try to get a handle on that, the building inspector and I worked out to add to a boilerplate for home-based businesses, that this business shall not be open to the public prior to a life safety inspection being performed by the fire department and code enforcement officer.
Okay, and that would be a standard...
I didn't hear all that.
Essentially, what we do here with approvals, so say we vote to approve this application, that's just step one, okay? And then, in general, all applicants then have to get, comply with all state, local, federal codes, if there are any. The one main one is when you leave here, you'll talk to the code enforcement officer and the fire chief, and what they will do is a basic life safety inspection. That is, has, we have no purview over that, I just have to reiterate that this is just step one, because what we want to keep you from doing is walking out the door here with an approval and saying, oh, we're done, hang out your sign, start doing it, and then, you know, we have one other, two other departments that say, oh, wait a minute, you know, they're not, they're not ready yet, so I don't know if that makes sense.
The building inspector and the fire chief?
Essentially, yes.
Fire department, I don't know who...
Yeah, for the life safety is typically fire department. I always would recommend talking to both the building inspector, code enforcement officer, and the fire chief. And it might just be a phone call, and they're like, fine, or probably come out, take a quick look, and say, yeah, okay, there's no big obvious hazards that somebody's going to get into. to get hurt here." You know, so.
Okay.
I think that that boilerplate that you and Shanti have come up with makes a lot of sense. We have typically had boilerplate on our approvals, which say that you need to get all the local, federal, state compliances and stuff. That boilerplate lays it out a little bit more specifically for you. Our goal in giving those is to say, "This is what we can approve, and here's what else you need to do." And so we're trying to give you full information by having those things. It isn't to kind of throw impediments in your way, but it's just trying to tell you, so that you know the steps that you need to take in order to be open as a business here in Newton.
Okay, thank you. So, before I ask for a motion, Jim, could you kind of state what we have for basic opening hours and any conditions?
Okay, these are the, I have five conditions. Obtain all state and local and state permits. Condition two, this business shall not be open to the public prior to a life safety inspection being performed by the fire department and the code enforcement officer. Hours of operation shall be 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturdays and Sundays, year-round, and by appointment. All business will take place in, in the barn.
Oh, one, maybe it was... The weekend we consider the Friday through Sunday.
Oh, so Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
10 to 7?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I didn't either.
I didn't either. I thought we said weekend. I think we're all Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Are you retired?
I know.
I, I was just going to say, for, for a lot of us, when it says weekends, it's Saturday and Sunday.
I did know.
All business will take place in the barn, and allowed for display of artwork on the barn doors during hours of operation. Those are the five.
Okay, that covers everything. I'm just going to open, is there any from the board, since I was approaching this thinking Saturday and Sunday, with Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? Any comments from the board on that?
Nope.
No.
Mine with me.
Okay. Hearing none, and with those conditions, can I have a motion to approve with those conditions, please?
So move?
Second from Barbara.
Second from Barbara. Okay, when you're ready, Jim.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Are there any questions before you leave on, like, what you have to do next, or didn't quite hear everything? Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Edwin.
Edwin, take care, bye.
I just lost my screen aside, yeah.
Calling the building inspector and the fire department.
So we'll let them, we'll let them know that we got approval. We will be getting, will we get an approval in writing or to us, or?
I, I will be doing a notice of decision on Thursday, which Mr. Andrews or Mr. Moran will be signing as quickly as possible. That goes, I'll be notifying the building inspector Thursday that you're, you've been approved, and you can call him. It's probably easier to arrange things with him for, for the life safety or, and the business occupancy, and that's probably your best way. But yes, I'll make sure that everybody knows that it's been approved.
Okay, so, his hours are Thursday also, right?
Right.
So, once we make appointments for them to come out, and once they do...
Do they notify you?
Do they notify you?
Do we notify you that they came out, or are they going to notify you?
And what's the length of the...
That, that, that's, I, I deal with that, that come, he informs me that, you know, you have your business occupancy.
So as long as you reach out, make the appointments, I would always ask for your own copy in writing of any approvals or stipulations. However, like Mr. Doggett says, all the other stuff is handled, the communications between the departments are handled through, through him. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But he doesn't go on, create it to get your approval. You do that.
Okay. Depending on the outcome, because we've, we've, we're losing valuable time with the shopping season. We're looking to expedite this as quick...
You can, you can call and leave a message on his phone.
Right.
Actually, tonight, he does check his phone regularly. At this point, I don't, I don't handle any of the scheduling or, or any of that for, for that stuff. That's why I'm saying that I just check in with him on a regular basis going, "Okay, this is the stuff that's on my list to be, have you done it?" It gets checked off. I take it off my list.
I think the only other question is, do we have to reapply for a rebate in the monies left over that we...
No, you get that automatically.
Automatically.
Yeah. Once I have all the bills in, if you want to hang around, the next item, or actually the two items further down, is a NEPR payout.
But not for you tonight. Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're not looking at a Christmas present, you know?
Yeah, as soon as I have all the bills, I do up, I, I, I close out your share of the NEPR account, and you will get a packet that will actually be copies of lottery receipts, cover statement, and a check. I'm assuming there's a check.
A little extra.
Wow.
Don't count on that.
Open soon, and that'll be the extra, right?
That's for hope, and if you can help to expedite whatever process.
Okay, so we'll probably call on the building inspector on Thursday when he is in, rather than leaving a message. We'll probably get a message anyways on Thursday, but we'll probably be calling him Thursday in the morning.
I'd, I'd call him and leave a message tonight or tomorrow.
I'm going to send an email.
Because he checks phone more than anything else, right?
Actually, he checks his email most.
Oh, okay.
He's wanting an email that I sent him.
You, you have his email address, because I included you on part of it. Send him an email, tell him that you would like, you know, to invite him to...
Stop by.
ASAP.
Right.
And he, he will respond.
Once they, they do meet, or they do come out, and they give you the information, you, we will then be notified as to, from you or from them, each of them?
You, that, that's all, all done.
That's for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
At, at this point, the only thing you're going to get from the planning board is a signed notice of decision, which is also recorded at the Registry of Deeds, because this isn't in place until you sell your property, and you, you'll get that within a week. Then, at some point in the not-too-distant future, you will get your NEPR statement with the check and all, all of that, the backup information. But I can't do that until I've done the recording and the bill for your, the ad for tonight comes in.
Once you do all, all that with the building, with the code enforcement, all that, he still does a business permit statement?
I believe so, that's, that's what they...
That's usually how you know, okay, everything's done.
Yeah.
Is I have the, I don't know if it's called a business occupancy permit, but he could, ask him that. I say, "Okay, how do I know when I can open my doors?"
Right. That, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you, you will actually receive a, a thing that says business occupancy permit, and it has signatures at the bottom of the, at least the building inspector. I'm not part of that, so I, I don't know exactly what form it takes today, but I know that there is actually a piece of paper.
Because it could be a matter of a day or two. We're, we're looking for the November 13th and 14th.
That you'd have to take up with him.
It's not up to us. We can't, we can't do anything more.
Right.
We've done our part, and it's up to you to do, to...
Just have a yacht sail.
That's why we suggested to go ahead and email them immediately. You can let them know that you got approved, get that going, and then they can come out, hopefully maybe even by the end of the week, depending on their schedule. And then, like we said, you can talk to them about the other paper you'll need to actually open up for that date.
The building inspector has hours on Thursday and Saturday mornings.
When do we get the final results from both of those?
That's, that's up to them. You'll have to talk to them about it. We, we have nothing to do with that.
So now it's just them, and once we get the okay from them, the sign goes up?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll close the, the public hearing at 7:43. Okay, going on to board business. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting, September 28th?
Ms. Annie, I'd like to make a motion that we accept those minutes of September 28th?
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Third?
Comments, corrections? Hey, Jim, call the roll, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck with your business. I hope it prospers for you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next on the agenda, NEPR manifests. I have two totaling $3,077.32. And can I have a motion to...
Annie, I'll make a motion that we accept the manifest, pay the manifest? What do we do?
Pay the manifest.
Pay the manifest.
This is Barbara, I second.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll, please. Jim?
Excuse me, I, my pages are out of, slightly out of order. Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, and as long as these aren't, happen to be registered, because I signed in the wrong place to start, but I think Lisa can...
I can print out clean ones afterwards.
Okay, the next, Master Plan Steering Committee update.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. We have three chapters that we're aiming towards right now, that are under the purview of the master plan. One is the land use chapter, which hasn't been updated since, I believe, 2008. And we have, we have a suggested, we have a bid, basically from Rockingham Planning, that I'd like to ask Jen to review with us. The second thing that we wanted to discuss tonight is the capital improvement plan, which is up to the planning board to work on and present, and Bob Marshon's going to speak about that. And then, we have our implementation draft that we've been working on, and Mike, Mark is going to do that, present that. And then, we'd like to discuss what's next after that, so we could go for it.
Why don't you go with that part?
Sure, I'll just give a, an overview of what the scope of work that Annie had requested came in at. So, we had estimated the cost would be $6,000 for the chapter, and we can bill that depending on what works with town finances. I know that may, that question sort of came up with encumbering funds or not, and whatever split, if that may be the option, we can do that. So, if we were to start in, you know, November, December, it would probably take about six months, so it would probably, an end date of around June 30th. That's at least the drafted contract I have sort of worked up. But it would be to draft the land use chapter, and it would be a land use chapter, it wouldn't be a existing land use and then a future land use. Sometimes towns, you'll see that split. It would just be, this would just be land use, so you get both done at once. It would take the results of the survey, it would take the current land use data and historic land use data. So we typically use 1962, 1978, and 1990, 1998, 2000, 2005, 2010, 2015. So just to project the information. Use existing zoning regulations and other pieces of information to draft the chapter to come, and also use it to have the basis for goals and objectives within that chapter. So then you can also come up with the action plan to go into an implementation plan. I will say with implementation, I'm just not, I don't want to steal your thunder or anything, but it makes sense to, as you're doing the chapters, with the exception of the vision, because that is a unique chapter, to incorporate the implementation aspect of it as you're doing those chapters.
That's actually not something that we wanted you to discuss tonight. That would be something that, you know, we're going to make a recommendation on, so thank you.
Okay. But that would be, so going through that process would be part of the land use chapter. And we also have that doing one outreach event. That could be, you know, having a public presentation about the land use chapter. That could take a lot of different forms, but having an outreach event so people can see some of the background data, and then also go through the, the goals and actions of that chapter, so people can see sort of what the intent is of the land use chapter.
Okay, I have a question. One of the things that I had asked for was inclusion of the census data and, and that kind of thing. You haven't mentioned that. Is that part of the land use chapter?
To the...
In the past, it wasn't here, that's why.
So typically with a land use chapter, you may have some reference to the general demographics, the change in sort of density of people. So there would be some census data typically incorporated, maybe a little bit of like general housing numbers to help explain how the town has developed over time and where it may be going. So there would be some census data in it, some demographic data, which given the 2020 census. It wouldn't be a large part of the data. You'd be, it would be focused actually more on land use and where it's come from and where it may be going in the future, from a lot of different things, related to transportation, natural resource, you know, how the town has developed, how it's developed based on its zoning and shifts in population.
Okay.
But in the end, we would do the outreach, provide the draft land use to the planning board, but also obviously be working with the Master Plan Committee, and then provide a draft ready for a public hearing.
Okay. And from the, the billing standpoint, I saw in some of the emails, yes, it could be split into two fiscal years. Was there an issue with billing any of it to this year, though? Did I see something that...
I understood from the research that Mr. Doggett had done, that as long as the work started this year, it would be possible to encumber, ask the selectmen to encumber the funds for the whole thing. Is that correct? Under, is that correct?
Up, up to the limit of the budget.
Yes, up to the limit of the project. So up to the $6,000...
Up to the limit of our budget.
Our already-approved budget that we're operating under now.
Which, we do, I'm sorry, I was not at the last meeting, and I don't know, I believe we have...
I think we at least have the half of it, because we discussed that.
I, I was just going to say, in anticipation of this question, I looked it up. We, we will have, in the vicinity of between $400 and $4,500 left in our budget at the end of the year, that is, has possibility of encumbrance.
Okay. Barring any unforeseen circumstances between now and then.
That's, that's my caveat.
Looks like we would have, under most any circumstances, at least $3,000.
Right.
Which is, I think, what the plan is, but...
There, put it this way, there's $1,500 left in the paid consultant line, and there's at least $3,000 left in the legal line. So that, that money could be encumbered. There are a couple of bills yet to come in, and there are a couple of areas of the budget that I would not recommend the board spending down. not recommend the board spending down through encumbrance, because I believe that December 10th or December 12th is the last day for petition warrant articles. We got one of those that drops on us. That has to come out of this year's budget to pay for the advertising for that. Yep.
Okay. But right now, it looks like we'd be fine for at least half of it, which is, answers my question.
Yes.
So the other major thing is the town policy to have three bids for work versus the possibility of asking the selectmen to consider Rockingham Planning a sole provider. In our research on the master plan subcommittee, we haven't found anybody who would qualify to be able to do the work. Rockingham Planning in addition is getting some state funding to update a lot of their information finally, right? You've been waiting for.
Yes, I will say very specifically, though, it's our housing needs assessment. It is not specifically land use.
Okay, okay. But the housing needs is an aspect, a smaller aspect of.
We would have the housing numbers. The housing need assessment may be close to being finished by a June 30th date of next year. It would be close, to be honest.
Okay. From, I think from our standpoint, we'd like to have as much incorporated as possible in the June 30th. Wouldn't be a drop dead date, but next year would be. Am I correct? Okay. So what we'd like to do is to ask the planning board to approve our asking the selectmen for A, sole provider status for Rockingham Planning, and B, to encumber $3,000 for the first payment for the work to be done.
Okay.
So I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, before we jump to there, I just want to have some.
I didn't know if you wanted to have discussion or a motion.
Well, I think we will vote on it, yes. But I have a couple other ones. Just because we mentioned money, any comments on that?
First of all, could I ask that you split it into two things, simply because it makes it a lot easier to, a nice, clean.
Sole provider and encumber, got it. Okay.
Is there an approval, or we need to accept the, are we accepting the contract, or is that implied in your?
I, I believe that.
Sorry.
I don't, I don't know. You tell me, do we accept the contract?
Well, that's what I'm going to ask.
Or do we recommend the selectmen accept the contract?
Jim?
The planning board, because it's out of your budget, you accept the contract. And I believe that the planning board has the ability in this instant to declare a sole provider. It doesn't need to go to the selectmen.
Okay, thank you.
Because you are an elected body while you're working under the governance of the policies and procedures, and the selectmen are technically the chief financial officers of the town.
Okay.
The selectmen don't have the ability to say whether or not they're the sole provider or not. If, I believe that I can reflect in the minutes that the board has declared that for this type of project, obviously is the sole provider available.
Okay. The second question, I guess, would be, we also have our own budget. Do we have to go to the selectmen for approval to spend $3,000 of our budget? If we could get a bill from Rockingham Planning?
That, that was going to be my next recommendation, was that if the bill can come in prior to December 1st, I can put it through. The planning board is going to have to say exactly where that money is going to come from, which I will supply you with. But the bookkeeper's going to look at me and go, this money's not in any particular, you know, you don't have all this money in the line. Where's it coming from? I need to be able to, when I enter the thing, say.
Okay.
They wiped out this and we wiped out that.
Thank you. So Jen, could we, if we approve, if we were to vote to approve you tonight as a sole provider and to accept the contract, could you invoice us for that prior to, prior to that date of December 1st?
Yeah, so we can send the contract, and the way I have the contract just drafted right now says $3,000 would be payable upon execution of this agreement. So with the contract, if it gets signed, then we can also include the invoice, the first invoice with that. I will say right now, how, as I have this drafted, the end date would be September 30th, 2022.
That works.
And if for some, you know, if there was one piece of data missing and we just wanted to be done, other than that, we could still provide it, or we could always work on an extension if, if that was needed, but.
I assume the contract says an extension if both parties are agreeable?
Yep.
Okay, okay. So what I'm hearing for tonight is two votes, sole provider, and then we accept the contract, and then we're not going to worry about encumbering funds. Once we get into December, we'll have two things. We'll either have the bill and it will be paid, and by then you can come up, Jim, with where the, which accounts in our budget that $3,000 comes from. And if there's some reason that we have to encumber, which I don't see it, we can take that up at that time.
Okay.
So a quick question. So say we end up with that extra money, like Jim said, we might, we might not, and we get the invoice for $3,000. Is it feasible that we can add the extra monies that are left over on top of that? So that's going into next year. We don't have to come up with a full $3,000. We could end up only having to owe, what, another $1,500 or something? That way there?
I would recommend, as we get to that point, we'll.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. There is an advantage of keeping somewhat level expenses over time.
Right.
And that, by splitting it up.
Just a, would you want to do 3,500 and then 2,500? It sounded like it was, I'm just a, just a suggestion.
Well, let me ask you a question. If, when it comes to actually signing the contract and paying, how difficult would it be if the contract itself at that point happened to say $3,000, but we have updated budget figures because we're getting closer to the end of the year?
We could do a.
That we say, okay, a quick addendum or something, we're going to make it 3,500. Does that work?
You can probably actually go up to 4,000.
I just don't want to have to come begging and say, oh, sorry, we can't pay as much as we said we were going to this year.
Put it this way, I can guarantee you, you've got three grand.
Yes, that's why I'd like to stay with that.
I would have to go in there and just double check, because it's that time of year when, you know, I need a box of envelopes, and I know that I've already spent.
Yeah.
The office supply budget.
So well, I'd like to keep it at three as we move forward.
Yeah, mine was just hypothetical, the I was throwing out there. If we had extra money left over towards the end of the year, could we encumber those funds to pay them? And then that way there, next year, we wouldn't have to worry about as much coming out of next year's budget.
We, the planning board does not encumber funds. Only the selectmen can encumber funds. That has to be in, I believe, the, our bookkeeper said, by the 1st of December. Regrettably, that's the, the problem here is, because we have a very tight budget.
Yeah.
I can't guarantee you that on December 1st, I will have enough actuals to be able to say, yeah, there's two grand left that we can encumber.
So we just will roll with the 3,000?
Yeah, we'll keep it open. Then how about, we have, as of now, there's a planning board meeting on the 23rd of November.
Right.
We'll revisit it then if.
As far as the total number?
Yeah. Well, I've already probably signed the contract, but if we want to add or encumber.
Right.
Yeah, I, I get. Budget updates in the middle of the month.
Yeah.
So I just got it the other day.
Yeah.
That's where, why I knew what we had.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to look at you and say, oh, yeah, you'll be able to ask the, the selectmen to encumber, you know, an extra 1,500, and then discover that it's not available.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, I think we, I have one question for you, Jen, on, this came up when I was doing some research on some of the solar siting issues and all that. Do you have anything, and would it be in the land use chapter? They talk about view shed of significant, significant value.
Stewart.
Is there anything that would, for a thing, is that in a land use chapter? Because they talk about it being in the master plan.
Yeah, so typically in land use chapters, you would note significant land features that are important to Newton. Country pond. Country pond's important to Newton. I think that's a fairly safe thing to say. If there are other views for cultural, historical, aesthetic things that are also of note, that certainly could go in a master plan.
Okay, and I'll just read this and. Don't think, I'm looking, researching this to make it, in my view, make it easier and expedite for solar installations to be installed with less cost. But what they talk about in the natural resource impacts and buffers, areas that are within the view shed of a significant value as identified in the master plan shall include additional reasonable mechanisms to mitigate from a continuous and uninterrupted view of the system. Okay, what does that mean? Basically, if it's in, if we've identified important view sheds from a town standpoint in the master plan, we then, if we chose to, would have a legal basis to say, we don't want a wind farm on this ridgeline, or more likely, or a large industrial solar installation on this view shed. That's why they talk about this. So having that gives you the legal basis to have that.
I get, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, typically that's when you have a large body of water, you have more hilly, mountainous areas than Newton really has. But not to say you don't have pretty areas, but just because the view shed can be more significant.
I was just, I was curious about that, to see if that would be in. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, this is, well, it's going to be a question for you after, but. So for now, is there any other, any further questions on the discussion here with the land use chapter and this contract?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. Could I have a motion to?
There are three. Would you like me to read them?
There's three motions?
Yeah.
I think there are three.
Sole provider and accept the contract.
And pay $3,000 out of the budget.
Oh, that's not just part of accepting the contract? Now, I'm going to accept the contract. We're not going to pay for it. Okay, make it three.
Simply because, because the planning board is spending money out of lines that are not.
Got it, okay.
Personally, it, it just makes, gives me a little bit more oomph when I go downstairs and go, yeah.
So for, so for you, do you want this as one motion or three? Three motions, okay.
Would you like me to read the motions?
Go ahead and read the motions.
Okay.
Read the first one, and we'll vote on it.
The first motion would be to declare the Rockingham Planning Board is the sole provider of the services needed to write the land use chapter for the master plan.
Okay, it should be Rockingham Planning Commission, right, not board?
I thought I read. I, that's, it says Rockingham Planning Commission right here.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
We'll second it.
Okay. Motion second.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, and then the next one?
The next one would be a motion to award the contract for the drafting of the land use chapter to the Rockingham Planning Commission.
I shall move.
Second.
Second.
He got it first.
Okay.
Mark got it first.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
And Mr. Marchand? That's unanimous.
Okay.
And the third motion would be a motion to pay $3,000 from the 2021 budget towards the contract with Rockingham Planning Commission for the land use chapter.
Okay, just before, before I'll make that motion, but before we do that, should we specify the line items that is to come from? The consultant fee and the legal line
Before we go there, do we have enough information, do you have enough information on the current budget and what we expect that it can come out of those two lines?
Can you give me like two seconds? I can, I can run out back and just pull it up to make sure.
That'd be fabulous.
Okay, my point is, I'd rather just leave it vague instead of tying it to those two lines, because if we leave it just from the budget, then we have the authority to take it out of those two lines.
Actually, actually, no, that adds beef, beef to it.
Okay.
And I apologize. I thought I had remembered everything.
You're doing fine. We'll give you two seconds.
All right, I'll give you a four.
Anybody want a lifesaver? Winter green.
No, thank you.
Individually wrapped.
Dennis, I don't hear any babies crying.
I know, that's a good baby.
What's that?
He's pretty good with, he cries way more than my first one.
Ah, okay.
But he was just crying like 30 seconds ago.
Okay.
With whinings.
We digress.
And for a few minutes, Mike, I thought you were going to quote something I may or may not have said about a view shed analysis for a large scale solar project in New Hampshire. So I'm glad you did it.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't see your name next to it, but. Okay, Jim, what you got for us?
Yes, you most certainly can take them out of those two lines.
Okay.
So he'll move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Third.
I think Bob got that one.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, before we jump, I have one question for the master plan, and this came out of, do we have a energy section in the master plan?
No.
Under New Hampshire RSA 674, colon, 2, comma, 3N. Now, what do you know, Jen, do you know much about the energy sections in master plans?
Yeah, I've done energy sections before. It's an optional section. Sometimes it gets incorporated in other sections of master plans. Sometimes in community facilities, if you're talking about solar panels on your police station, it can be incorporated as a general land use. But energy sections can talk about siting of solar panels. It can talk about either on municipal or private property. It can be, you might want electric vehicle charging stations at some locations. You might have a community power aggregation. You might not want to allow windmills. So it can cover a range of energy related topics.
So if we wanted to have in the master plan, because I'm thinking from the survey, and you guys know much better the actual, you know, nitty gritty from the survey, but wanted to encourage EV charging stations, and wanted to incorporate that into, I don't know, major site plans, even as a requirement or something. Could that be done, and would it be done, would the, would you need an energy chapter as a legal basis for it?
No, certainly there are towns who might have a general goal. I know Newton doesn't specifically talk to. sustainability as a general goal, and then if they had a transportation section, you may talk about, well, what are ways we can do with our transportation networks more sustainability? An EV charging station requirement for, you know, a large multifamily or industrial park or some other threshold that may be reasonable, you know, putting in that you want there to be one at a municipal parking lot could be part of it, so I mean, there, there are other avenues to perform. It just depends on what your goal is. If one of your goals is to keep municipal costs within reason, well, it may make long-term financial sense to put solar panels on newer buildings, the new fire station.
Yeah.
Just as a, so there are other ways of putting it in without directly having an energy.
I just know from the survey, the sustainability, those kind of things seem to come up a lot, and maybe I noticed them more just because I tend to notice, you know, those particular things, but. Okay, so we don't need it, although I'd like to keep it on the, the committee's mind as you're looking at it of, okay, whether we actually have a distinct, you know, energy section as a separate chapter or addressing those issues.
I can comment that maybe sustainability came up as some general thing, but that mostly in my mind had to do with taxes and tax impact. It did not have, there was really nothing about energy that was in there. The biggest thing that came up that's not really addressed in the vision chapter goals that came up was some people wanting sidewalks, about 30% of the people want sidewalks on Route 108, which possibly we felt could be handled by a village, you know, a, you know, a village committee. But the, the whole idea of energy did not come up at all in, in the master plan, nor was it part of the questions. So that isn't something that's part of the vision that we've adopted at this point or the goals that we've adopted. It's certainly something that could be considered in the future, but it isn't part of what was in the survey.
I find that interesting.
Well, I think maybe the way that we think about it though too is conservation was a big part of the survey, right? And so maybe if there's, I mean, I will need, I haven't looked at the survey results in many months, but if I look back at them, maybe there's some way that those can go hand in hand, but I don't, also don't wanna try to force a round, peg in a square hole.
Oh, no.
You know?
No, I'm just.
But it isn't.
We do a master plan every.
I think our, our natural resources and preserving our water supply and things like that, those were like 90% of the people wanted that. You know, I think, I, I happen to think, having been on the vineyard this summer, they have charging stations all over the place, I mean, I think it's a great idea for the future, it just didn't come up at that time.
Didn't come up in our survey, but yeah, but I guess in terms of achieving those conservation goals, we should think about it holistically perhaps, and there's, there's, there's good food for thought there.
Well, I think one of the plans for next year for the whole conservation and natural resources and water resources that we've discussed is to try and get those chapters, A, simplified, because they're like this thick, but to work with conservation on those, and that would be really a good time to talk with conservation, I think, would think about that and see, you know, see whether they can adopt that, and with the selectmen, to see if they would adopt those goals.
Maybe there's like, maybe there's New Hampshire state research about emissions and the effect on wildlife resources and, and conservation efforts, and if we can use that research as a proof point for implementing certain changes or requirements with further development, that may be how we do it. We'll have to look into it.
Yeah, Dennis, go ahead.
Is there, thank you, is there anything on the books right now to regulate solar in any form or fashion in Newton?
In Newton?
In Newton?
Just for what you would have for putting solar panels on rooftops and requiring building permits?
Yeah, so no ground, ground mount solar regulations. I'm just thinking of the, you know, 10 years ago in Massachusetts, there was no regulation, and then five years ago, a bunch of communities proposed or implemented regulation. Now, there's probably, I, I'm aware of a handful of communities that have more moratoriums on ground mount solar.
Yep.
Because it was unregulated and developers are going in and clear cutting and installing solar. You know, that's not the current atmosphere in New Hampshire because of the current regulations, and it may never be, but is that something we want to incorporate now? So we have controlled.
So as, as a land use topic, so, so where solar sighting actually would be for like ground mounted arrays or just single mounted, or honestly even wind turbines to a degree? That is a land use issue in part, so that is definitely something that can be discussed as part of a land use chapter, but then also, you know, maybe helping decide if and what level of regulation you may want to consider.
Yeah, well, I'd like, I'd like to remind you, this is the, it's called the planning board, not the reaction board, so I'd rather use master plan and things like that to look ahead for things before, just like you said Dennis, before, it's like, oh my God, look what's happening, we need to put the brakes on, which then creates this whiplash effect where I'd rather just say, okay, we've looked at this with a, from a holistic townwide view, and here's a sensible way to make it, you know, to make it work, so. That's, that's it, okay.
Okay, great. I know we have at least one member of our master plan steering committee who has a very high, high priority for this type of conservation work and such, so.
I do.
I'm sure, I'm sure that we'll be taking it under consideration.
Well, I know I can save the, putting it on the fire station would be saving the town a bunch of money. That's, you talk, stall is right there being saved.
Right, yeah.
Okay, the other thing I know the master plan steering committee is working on is the capital improvement, improvement plan.
Bob.
But before we go too far with that, I need to back up because so far as a board, we've only voted for the master planning, planning steering committee to update the master plan. So I'd like to have a discussion to bring in, I think within that same committee, researching and looking at the next step of CIP. And just for Jen, do you have any comments on how that best is approached?
Well, so there's a, there's a couple of ways, and so in Newton, your legislative body, and I, I don't know that you're uphand authorized the planning board to do the CIP, so you guys are in charge of the CIP. So you could continue to do that, we had worked on it a couple of years ago, didn't get a lot of buy-in from the department heads to provide information, so it wasn't admittedly a super effective effort. But you do have a CIP, updating the CIP is a planning board process. If it is more than the planning board wants to take on, because you guys are busy, it can also be by the select board made as a separate committee in town, of which one planning board member does have to be on it, others can be, but then you'd also wanna have budget committee and other department heads to be part of it, if you go that route. You know, CIPs are useful, it's a good bridge between the planning board and the budget committee and everybody else, but if it's not, if, if there's not the bandwidth to maintain it and do it every year, it can be kind of a lost effort, so. So if you're gonna do it, plan to keep doing it, I guess is my advice.
So this was the last one that was done in 2008?
Um, we, we worked, that was the last complete one that I know of.
What I printed out is the meat and potatoes of, um, so if you, if you look at this, and I'm sorry for those, Dennis and Ms. White at home, um, I basically printed out.
Well, I'm gonna be rude here and interrupt just for a minute, cause what I want to finish up here is, okay, like I, I think a capital improvement plan is very important for a town. I think it's a good thing, and I think it should be pursued. What I'd like is from the board is comments to, okay, do we increase the purview of the master plan steering committee to take on the next step in the CIP, and what do we want that to look like? And so from the board discussion, can I have any input on, do we think that's appropriate? Do we wanna pursue it, and is the, the existing master plan steering committee the best way to do that?
Can we open, is it open for discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay, great, I think it is, cause I think it aligns very closely with our implementation efforts, I mean, it's essentially though just putting budgets or estimates on what we're trying to accomplish over the next three to five years or longer. So yes, I think it's, it aligns really well, and I'm supportive of that.
Okay.
According to the educational video that I watched on the YouTube that the state provides, that this is actually the third important part of the master plan. So the first one is the visionary, second one is the land use, and then comes the CIP, which should be updated in order to have the master plan fully put up in place, and then the rest of the chapters, like we were just talking about, are the chapters that fall in where they may be. But those three are the three most important parts of a master plan of any towns.
Okay.
So I believe it needs to be done, and especially like I was talking about, that this town right now, for all of us concerned, for all of us that don't know, and this is one of the reasons why I'm pushing it very much so as a hot topic, is this town has pretty much been flying by the seat of their pants. I know that we've tried to do things and purchasing things for the CIP and taking care of business, but it seems as though our infrastructure right now is falling to pieces around us. We just purchased a new fire truck that we needed, cause the other one was falling apart. Our ambulance chief just came to the board the other meeting. It broke down twice while they had somebody in the back of it, okay? That's, he quoted a price of $270,000 for a new ambulance. So we have that, we have other roads that need to be taken care of, and there are numerous other things like cisterns that we need to get. By getting this in place that we could possibly pass a, what's, what's it called, Mike? To get funding for, that we would be able to do?
Warrant article?
Or.
Fund?
If I have it in place, no, we would be able to assess new development to be able to kick into a fund.
Oh, an impact.
Oh, impact, yes.
Okay.
Right, by doing all this, so I think it's very important that it's done. Now whether, how we do this, if we vote to just do this ourselves, I think it would be important and imperative that we get some of these other departments involved myself.
Okay.
To really fully.
So let's, I'm gonna, so I, I hear from the board, a lot of buy-in that we wanna pursue the CIP, and it seems like bringing that for now, and if the, the steering committee, is that something, does the chair of the steering committee can handle?
It is something that.
Now, I'm not talking about having a complete, going all the way to, we're gonna do a CIP. It's like, okay, kind of deciding, how do you guys, like, you come up with, what's the best way to do it? Are we gonna do it, take it on entirely by us? Are we gonna work with the selectmen, or is there a point where you say, oh, maybe the selectmen should designate a separate committee to do it? You know, that's the information that I would like to.
Okay, so.
Brought up.
Okay, ready?
Ready.
Okay. The master plan steering committee, subcommittee has discussed this as a part of at least getting it initiated and started as a part of our work because there were so many comments from the different departments and buildings and such about the needs that were there. We've also discussed that we feel it's very important to consult with the selectmen about it, and I've gone so far, if the committee approves, if the board approves, to be on the agenda with the selectmen at their next meeting so that we can talk with them about how we can all proceed and make a town buy-in for a capital improvement plan and town planning. There's some things that the selectmen have been able to do this year, for instance, that, you know, would need to be updated. Bob has gone through and, and prepared kind of lists of things that have been cited in the past so that they can be kind of checked off or said, this is a priority. One of the things, and it's nationwide as a, as an issue, is roads and infrastructure. We're all built in the 50s and 60s, designed to last for 20 years. Our road agent has very fiscally conservatively not increased his budget in 13 years that he's been serving, and as a result, he's a robbing Peter to pay Paul to do whatever road improvements he can do, and you got something like Heath Street that's full of potholes. Not, not Heath, yes, Heath Street, that's full of potholes, others that are, there's just, there's a need to do some of these things if the voters are willing. So what we need to do is to lay out what the needs are and, and be able to bring them to the voters to say, what do you wanna do?
Right, so I see.
And we could go into gravel roads, we could, we could allow it to go to gravel roads.
Back up just a little bit, cause right now, the master plan steering committee has, does not have the purview to pursue the CIP.
Which is why we're coming to you with this.
We'll just keep it at, do we, do you guy, can you do it? Do you think at this point, you can say that you can do it all, which means it stays under the planning board? Or does you go to the select board to have a separate committee for, like, do you have that enough, that enough information now to make that decision? Or is that something that we gotta go? Go ahead, Jim.
I believe what you're looking for is a motion to authorize the master plan steering committee to produce a, an outline of potential methodologies for updating CIP.
That would make it a lot simpler, does.
Well, I, I think what I've tried to do is to give you a brief outline to start with, which is one that, that Bob has done some work initially to, let me just, let me just finish, Mike, if I could. To, Bob has started doing some to build those things. We have a list of things from the goals that were set and approved by the planning board. We have in our plan to, if, if approved by the planning board, to then go to the selectmen and discuss with them, then to come back to the planning board and say, okay, here are the things. So we need the authorization to be able to take those first couple of steps so that we can then come with a more complete plan.
Is this plan do the actual CIP? Or is this plan on how to approach to actually accomplish a CIP?
It is to approach how to accomplish a CIP.
Okay, so the discussion with the selectmen, what are you hoping to get from the discussion with the selectmen?
Is affirmation of what projects they see.
Okay.
You know, to, to build consensus on what projects need to be addressed, to see what role they would like to play if they do, and then for us to discuss what role we want to play. Do we want to just take it on or not? At that point, we would know what the willingness is of different parties to be involved, and we would be able to make, make a judgment and an assessment at that point. So it's about being authorized to do some research, some preliminary work and research.
So it's close to what Jim said, Jen?
It's, it's just a suggestion, cause I've seen a lot of towns do a lot of CIPs. Talk to the budget committee, really.
We don't have one, we have the selectmen.
We still have a budget committee.
The selectmen are our budget committee.
Okay, all right, never mind, it's covered.
I, I was gonna suggest that we, we go to the selectmen and ask them to appoint a board to, to tackle this, because we're gonna need their help in getting the other, I'm tired, getting the other office heads to pull together their important infrastructures that are needed so that we can do this properly and get everything put in place, like I said, so that we can, we can go at this in an effort that will ensure that we're looking at our drastic needs upfront, and then we can work at what we need to look at to accomplish upfront, what we can put at that medium risk, and then what we can put at the low risk. put at the low risk.
Okay.
Because I've had some people talk about it as a wish list, but as far as I'm concerned, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be accomplished and it ain't a wish list.
Need to get the, the buy-in. So, I'm hearing from you that your opinion right now is, we're ready to approach the select board about setting up a committee. What's your thought on that?
I think that that would be part of the discussion, but I don't think we're at the point of saying to them, will you set up a committee? We're saying, to what extent do you have the space and, you know, time to get involved in this? Do you, do you want to?
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're learning what people are willing to do at this point. Then we can come back and make a recommendation on it.
Okay. So, I, how do we word it? So, you have the authority to take it all the, basically, take it all the way up to the point of not, you, I want to have the board vote before, I want more information so the board can vote, can say, yes, we're gonna ask the selectmen to create a committee.
Right.
Right.
So, I want to give you guys everything you need to go up to that point.
Exactly. I think we're in agreement on that.
You want a motion to authorize the master plan steering committee to produce a procedure for updating the CIP?
Exactly.
That would actually include any research, approaching the selectmen.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That covers it. Yep, that's good.
That gives you where you can approach the selectmen.
Yep.
To get their buy-in because that's gonna give you some information on, you know, do I have enough buy-in from the select board to even ask them to create a committee that's gonna be effective?
Exactly.
Okay. So, I think that, Jen, you look, you're okay? Okay, sorry. This is dragging on.
Have there been any towns that just, the planning board just does it and then goes to the selectmen after it's been written and done and buttoned up?
Um...
And is that a faster process?
I have not known a town where the planning board, without talking to anybody, just does it. There are several towns where the planning board certainly is the lead, but then they bring in a few other folks from other committees just to participate. And it's sort of like they establish a subcommittee that includes a few other people. It depends on how the town operates and who's comfortable doing what. You need to have a good wrangler to get a CIP done, though.
The hard thing is getting buy-in and participation from the departments that are spending the money.
Right, right.
Who need the capital.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think, like, the, the step to this step, going to the selectmen and then like figuring out with them with the processes. To me, that feels like it's just like adding another step that's going to slow down what we're ultimately trying to achieve. But if that is the way that it needs to be done, that's the way that it needs to be done. I'm just trying to think of how to be as efficient as possible in order to get something written.
So, pretty typically have, making sure that the department heads are all tasked and understand that they are being asked or required to do, to fill in their capital improvements, you know, whatever their big expenses are gonna be, the new fire truck, the police vehicles, whatever it is. That, and they actually provide the information to the extent that they can. Getting that information is the most critical. If you don't get that, your CIP is kind of useless.
Yeah.
So, getting the buy-in to be able to get that information is huge.
Well, see, that's what I was saying about getting these department heads involved because just what Jen was saying, getting that information so that we can put it in place at high priority, medium, and low, and then go to the selectmen to say, okay, listen, guys, this is what we did, and this is where we can enforce it, but this is when they come into play to where we can say, this is what we need for these department heads, this is what we looked at, this is what we strongly suggest that we could put in and put on the, the voting for the people, like what was talked about, that this is what the town needs.
Yeah.
And what we need to start looking in advance, like you were talking about with the solar panels and all that other stuff, so that we don't get whacked for $20 million one year and then, you know, $3 million another year.
So, I think the, you gotta get from the department heads. The department heads all answer to the select board. They don't answer to us. So, just like you're having that discussion with the select board, if you get the select board, I think, to buy in, then they can hopefully prod the department heads to...
And they did, we did ask for that, and they did provide that when we were updating the town government's chapter. And the, we did ask the different departments to give us their capital improvement needs at the same time. Those obviously need further definition, so it's getting the definition from here. But we have had the selectmen's buy-in to date, and I think it would be really good to continue to cooperate, partner, whatever, with them and give them a chance to tell us what they want to do.
Okay.
So, that, that motion would work. I'll make that motion as Jim read it.
Yeah. Read it again, Jim, just to, the what, the motion, that word?
Yes.
The committee to...
You want me to read it again?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Ms. Collier moved to authorize the master plan steering committee to produce a procedure for updating the capital improvements plan.
Okay. That's vague, but I think it gives you...
It gives us what we need to give a move forward.
Everything you need short of locking in the planning board of either losing it to a committee or taking full responsibility.
Right, right, right.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Sorry, I forget these guys are up there.
It's just me, Mike.
Oh, okay. Never just you.
Actually, I believe Mr. Moran was on the last CIP.
Ah, okay. Dennis, did you have a comment or just let me?
No, I have no comment.
Okay, thanks. All right, Jim, call the roll, please.
By the way, we lost Ms. White about five minutes ago.
Okay, yeah.
I'm, I'm watching in case she pops up. Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Masha? That is unanimous.
Did you want, I think where we have full buy-in that there's a definite need for a CIP. So, did you want to discuss this further?
We don't need to. I mean, I just put this out. I printed the couple just real quick. The pages that I printed, that page four demonstrates the rationale behind what is considered capital improvements. There's a list of them that's on it. Page 19, that shows roughly back from 2008 to 2014, some of the expenditures that the town went through, and this is, and this is how the ebbs and flows of it goes, and that's why the importance of the CIP, to keep it in structure. And then the list, like my dear friend was talking about earlier when she brought up some of the stuff that the town had looked at, Ms. Collier pointed out, some of this stuff is done, some of it is not. So, I mean, we can check some of it off, some of it might have to carry over, like I was talking earlier, like the cemeteries, when they proposed the cemeteries a few years back, they said that they were running out of room, and if we don't get more land for a cemetery, we're gonna be up against state laws and regulations because it's mandated that every town has to have a burial ground in it. So, this is why I say this is very important, and we have to look at this and get everybody intact, so...
Okay.
That's great. Okay.
Question for, for Jen, just as we, the committee for now, pursuing CIP, how much are you available within your contract and knowledge base, I guess, to assist, just with basic questions or procedures or...
I mean, just basic questions, I can certainly answer those under your circuitry or contracts. I mean, attending a CIP meeting, whoever is going to be the CIP lead, that would be beyond the contract, but basic process questions and stuff, that's...
So, if I was to, or if we were to say, okay, because we just gave the, the subcommittee the purview to do this, that, is it appropriate that, say, the chair or her designee reached out to you with any questions?
I mean, if they have questions about the legal basis of the CIP or what should go into it, that's fine. I mean, the, the detail of what the police department needs, that, that would be beyond, basically.
Okay. So, that's a, a resource that you have limited.
Yeah, and Jen has been fabulous every time we've asked.
Yeah, okay.
Still good to have.
All right. Any...
Yes, we had one more thing.
Oh, God, what?
Yeah. Well, I didn't introduce, we had three things. And this is about the implementing, implementation aspect. Jen has recommended several times that they be added, implementations be added to the various chapters. Our feeling in looking at a whole lot of master plans as a, as a committee is that we would do better to have an implementation chapter stand on its own, as many towns do. It seems to be a very effective planning tool for checking off what you do when, as a town as a whole. So, that's our recommendation, and Mark was gonna speak about it a little bit. If we could let him do that.
Well, I, I came up with just an implementation introductory text. I modeled it after several other towns that I saw and just in sort of process. I mean, overall, I circulated the text to you, Annie. I mean, we can, we can, I can read it, or I don't know how you want to go over it tonight, but basically what there is, is there's a two paragraph, oh, can I email it to you? That's not it.
No, this is, this is kind of a draft without the, this is, that's, that's...
Okay. I'm trying to figure out why it's not, it's...
Go ahead.
Not showing...
I can email it to you.
Why don't you, why don't you just do the, you know, kind of the summary of it for now?
Yeah. So, essentially what it is, is there's just a two paragraph intro about what implementation means. It's a program for all the actions that should be taken to accomplish the goals of the master plan, et cetera. In terms of what that encompasses, there would be a list of chapters. I just need to get that list of chapters in terms of what we've decided on from you. And then, from a responsibility standpoint, who is in charge of implementing those, those different goals? So, you know, that's either the town of Newton, and then also in cooperation with other organizations. The other organizations could include regional, state, federal agencies, et cetera. And then we also want to make sure that in terms of monitoring progress and revising the plan, that we outline what progress looks like, and then how to sort of revisit these goals over a period of time. So, what I saw in a lot of towns is that they meet at least once a year to review the actions that have been taken and to assure that desirable actions will be taken in the future, prepare a brief report to the board of selectmen after each meeting, so that would presume that there would be an annual meeting to revisit those goals. That recap will be sent to the board of selectmen afterwards to review the progress. And then, we would also need to, each goal would have a town official that's assigned to it, and as part of those check-ins, there would be accountability in terms of how they're tracking towards those goals. So, that's how I've sort of outlined the intro in order to sort of summarize why we have an implementation chapter and then how the responsibilities are to be dealt.
One of the advantages, too, of having a separate chapter is that it could be updated on a periodic basis. It's like if, whoever does the capital improvement plan, obviously, that's going to inform some of the implementation chapter. As things get checked off, it should be probably updated on every couple of years anyway, instead of every 10. So, that was our thinking in it, is that it would be more of a working document that could be useful to, to the town rather than having somebody say, oh, yeah, there's that, you know, town government chapter, I haven't read that in five years, I don't know what the implementations were in it, you know, that kind of thing. So, we've just felt, one of the things that typically happens with any organization is if you don't have a who, what, where, when, why laid out, a lot of things don't happen. So, we were feeling that this would be something to maybe help things happen. So, that's why we, you know, looked at having it as a separate chapter.
Okay. So, I've heard some of the pros of having a separate implementation chapter. I want to hear some of the cons or differences, I guess, from your experience with some of this.
So, this, this is not a con. Let's, I want to be very...
Yeah, that's why I say differences.
The reason I suggest doing it as you're doing the chapter is because you should have a, a complete implementation plan. That's absolutely, I think that's great. Your introduction is awesome. It's just that as you're doing each of the topics, then incorporating them into the plan. So, that's what I mean when I say developing the implementation section for land use because then you want it to then all feed into the same plan so that you are regularly returning. So, I just wanted to clarify, that is what I have offered, do the implementation plan with the chapter so that you're just building it as you're doing the chapter. But yes, you should absolutely revisit it.
I think that's already incorporated in some of the chapters because in some of the chapters...
It is a little bit.
We do have the goals for like what, what specific tactics we want to execute in order to feed back to what we ultimately want to accomplish. So, I think that isn't, maybe not in all the chapters, but it's in at least one or two because I remember seeing them.
It's in some, it may not have the level of detail you're looking for with like the who's the responsible party, you know, is there funding, when are we gonna get it done? So, it may not have that detail, but yeah.
And you're right, and then I think I've, at this point, I've read four different master plans. They do have the goals at the end of each chapter in terms of, and then it's translated to like what you have, the Excel grid where it's all compiled into one place and easily able to be checked off and crossed off and updated over time.
Right, right.
So, what I'm seeing, correct me, or, so, I could see on each chapter, there's the goals and essentially the implementation of those goals, and then that same implementation is joined with all the other implementations on a separate implementation chapter. So, if I'm reading the land use chapter, when I read that chapter, I can see the goals and how we plan on...
At the end.
Of that chapter, yeah. Or, and/or, I can just open up to the implementation chapter and get an overview of the whole thing.
Yes, but with more detail. Because what this chart will give you, it gives you, like Annie said, the who, what, where, when, why, in terms of like who's responsible for it, what's the timeline in terms of achieving that goal. Some of that information you may not get in the chapter.
So, there'll be a lot in the chapter, but not maybe the, the part that's changing a little more often, like, okay, by this date and this person?
Yeah. This is a little bit more of like a bookkeeping exercise, but it's definitely the granularity that you need in order to hold parties accountable and meeting deadlines, et cetera.
So, in essence, it's showing who's the accountability...
Yeah.
Of who's, who's supposed to be making what happen.
And the target time and how it's gonna be funded.
Budgets, yeah, exactly.
So, the, the chapter is gonna say what should be implemented, the individual chapter, and then the implementation chapter says, and this person's gonna do it, and it's gonna be done by now, and it's gonna be...
It's gonna be pulled from this budget, and this is what the estimate is, all that information, yeah.
And, and as, as discussed about the CIP, I think we feel that getting the select board involved, getting the, and them getting the different departments involved, there has to be a lot of buy-in. There has to be a lot of input into this, there has to be a lot of people saying, yes, this makes sense. So, we need to make this as broad as possible as we're, as we're working on this. So, that's kind of part of where, where we'd like to go with it, and we'd like the board to, you know, okay that direction.
Well, I think for right now, the, the authority we have allows you to do that. It's gonna be a, this is probably a people skills because to get buy-in, you gotta get ownership. You gotta work with departments without stepping on department toes, a territory, so...
Yeah. Yeah. It should be a lot of fun.
Sometimes it can be helpful to have a, I'm gonna say a directive for the different parties that may be involved with the implementation so that, say, the conservation commission, the road agent, the fire chief, all sort of know what their role is and then do that routine review. For committees, it's often sort of their organizing meeting is a good opportunity to do that. So, you relook at what are our tasks, what's our work plan for this year? So, sometimes some directive information in that implementation plan can be helpful, just in a broader sense of this is, we want, we want people to be reviewing this regularly.
Yeah, right.
So, is your plan for the implementation chapter that, it sounds, it seems like you're doing an update and a writing of it right now, and then as individual chapters, like, say, the land use chapter gets completed, that part of the implementation chain would be finalized? Like, are you gonna...
This would be updated, the Excel grid. This would be updated, the Excel grid.
So you're able to have an implementation chapter with the existing master plan that we have right now? Is that what you, is that what you're trying to go with?
Yes, yes.
And as we update the chapters?
Yes, as needed, and probably minimally every two years, possibly on an annual basis. But, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's a working document.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so when the land use chapter gets written, and the end of it has the goals and so forth and specifics, then those would get translated into, into this. And probably with some sort of town-wide meeting. I mean, I would definitely want the selectmen to be involved in, in doing it, and see how many of the other people of the committees...
Well, you can't put a department on an individual in the implementation chapter without their complete buy-in.
That's right.
It'll get stuck on a shelf.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for that. Anything else from...
No, we, we're, we're good.
One hearing meeting, that was a lot, but anything from the TV screen? No? Okay. Well, then I will call the meeting to a close at 8:53.
Very good. Thank you.